After they restake.
Yeah.
Just like number twenty-three.
Yeah.
All the way through D, put twenty-four on there as well. And then we'll react on this once the state remarks, because you're telling me they said they would come out and remark it. Are we gonna be okay with their timeline?
We're running into some issues on that. It's possible that we could do it, I would, I don't know.
I don't know what the timeline is for staking and resurbing and.
Well, I guess you're.
It's already been done.
If I would like, if I could ask the bigger question is. Is, is, so you're looking to negotiating good faith with the state on this? Because some of the feeling I'm getting from the conversations and from the log is that, is that I don't know that that's been the case on some of these conversations. At least the impression the state had was that they're not, that you're not interested in actually negotiating, that you're really looking to kill the project.
Yeah, I would like to know where that came from.
From Linda Girkey.
That they what?
They talked to Linda Girkey on the call on their contact log and she indicated that we're, that we don't want the project and we're gonna contact our attorney.
That was because it was a legal letter, of course, anybody smart would do that too.
Right, but as opposed to saying, yeah, we'll talk to our attorney and we'll be happy to, we'll be willing to negotiate. But the problem is, is that I don't want the delays here to be part of the strategy. If you're actually, if you're looking to good faith, we could probably put it off for two more weeks. But I don't wanna come back in two weeks and say, well, now we need something else and now it's two more weeks and then all of a sudden we have some real issues with deadlines. That puts the entire jeopardy, the entire project in jeopardy to the point where we're looking at a quarter of a million dollars being thrown away. And that's my concern, Chris, your train of thought came back?
Well, train of thought, I'm gonna shift to what you were just talking about. So from point of clarification, we, we can, I mean, unless the council wants to say, we're not gonna do this project. We're gonna say two hundred fifty-three thousand dollars so they can keep their backyard the way it looks today. We're willing to spend taxpayer money when we argue over three percent increases in rates, we argue over pennies in levies, but willing to throw away two hundred fifty-three thousand dollars, there's no reason to table this. They do need to get their information and can they not still continue to negotiate even though we approved this stuff? And we'll be bored.
As I said, we can continue negotiations all the way up to that hearing date.
So they gotta tell December is when you throw out.
Nothing to stop me or Department of Transportation from continuing negotiations all the way up through that hearing day, including providing this drawing. You know, whatever pictures or drawings or legal descriptions, staking, and I think that's negotiations that could be done between now and a December hearing.
And so from a city standpoint, is that now you? Because we don't have contact with the state and I can appreciate their frustration. And, and getting this done.
I'm happy to be the point of contact.
You know.
I'm gonna be the person filing the condemnation action, so yes, I would be happy to be that main point of contact. But the Department of Transportation will still be involved because.
Absolutely, that's why I wanna know who's gonna be contacting the Department of Transportation and getting this done. Good.
But, but I think it's, it's critical that you get this hearing day, because if you don't, the Department of Transportation has told me that your federal funding is in jeopardy. And that's significant.
Yes, more points of clarification. I had some inquiries about an October twentieth deadline. Um, and I don't, I tried to go back and look at that, it was something that we said at the last meeting. And I believe it was, but I think it was something that was contacted or communicated by, to Linda. That Linda communicated back to us. And so that was kinda getting passed around. And so we did contact NDOT today. That October twentieth deadline was just a window for federal bid letting. It doesn't jeopardize anything, it's not a hard task, but they wanted to have, and they actually needed to have it done a number of given days ahead of that October twentieth deadline to hit that bid letting window. When we contacted Jody Gibson and EOT, who's in charge of the financial side of this project, she said that was a window they were trying to hit, to hit that thorough bid letting window. But your project can be let later on and your, your specific funding is not jeopardized by that deadline. Because that was something floating around, we're like, we have no clue where October twentieth came from, because none of our emails said October twentieth. And we don't remember it being in part of this conversation two weeks ago when we were here. That's something for clarification, probably for more people that are in the crowd.
So Kelly, you're referencing a deadline, can you, do you have a specific date certain when they said this has to happen? Is, but, or is there not a date certain?
The Department of Transportation told me they need to have, to satisfy the federal funding requirements, they need to have a hearing set. And they suggest that a December hearing date would be fine, um, as long as that date gets set.
So theoretically, if the issue is the survey and laying it out on the ground and the state has said they will go back out and do that. We can table it for two weeks, our next meeting is October first, that would still give twenty days before that October twentieth and plenty of time for them to send the hearing.
Yes.
My next question though is, so also kinda what Kelly's saying. If we approve this tonight, we have opportunities to stop this at any time, is that true?
Yes, 'cause Kelly's your counsel.
So I'm just saying. We approve this tonight and you have a December hearing and we don't like the outcome, we could still choose as a council to stop.
Don't like what outcome?
Say homeowners, all of the. We would have that opportunity. And to put it in perspective too, it isn't about tabling for two weeks, if we won't have enough council members in two weeks. You're really tabling it for at least a month at that point.
The other one is, we, we need to give a reasonable amount of time for the survey crew or whoever to come out. And I think the number one thing I want, i- if, if you go that route, the number one thing I want is a definitive list as best we can tonight of what is wanted to be done, so it can be provided. And we know who's gonna go request it and we can get them on it as soon as possible and who the contacts for the HOA are and everything else, so we can follow up on it and request all these things they need, because they probably need more than just a negotiator or a survey crew, they wanna talk about design elements, specific.
I'm just saying though, if we approve it tonight, we have full control all the way up to the condemnation hearing. So, but if we approve it tonight, there, we're still, they're still in negotiation and we still have, we still have control of stopping the project all the way up to the hearing.
Yes.
So my opinion is we need to move forward and make decisions tonight.
Chris, did you want to add something?
Uh, I've, I mean, I was gonna add, I said, add, I'm gonna reiterate what I said before. If you're gonna, if you're gonna, if you're gonna change your opinion and decide that we're gonna let this go to the wayside and say buy that two hundred fifty-three thousand dollars. If, if that's really in your mind and you're willing to do that, then maybe you're in favor of tabling this. If, if in the end you're not willing to throw a quarter of a million dollars to the wind, there, there's no reason to table anything. Because they can still negotiate, can still get everything they need and have it all happen prior to a December third hearing, which hopefully would never happen because they've reached an agreement.
Can I, can I say something?
Go ahead.
I, I would just add that when, when you mentioned throwing away the two hundred fifty-seven thousand, I understand that, that's real money and it's been spent. And, and one of the things I, the homeowners requested when we met a week or two ago was that in order for them to know, because they're taxpayers too, and nobody wants money wasted. But there could be an issue of, well, is it a waste of money to put in a road that there's obviously some opposition and for probably there's some valid reasons for it. When the city's going to spend another four hundred thousand, if it's a one point one or one point two million dollar project and the city has to kick in the extra above the seven hundred seventy-six thousand that was in that contract, that's another four hundred thousand you're spending. And we didn't know really whether it was four hundred thousand, three hundred thousand, five hundred thousand. And that was one of the questions in the meeting, we kinda wanted answered so that, so that you all would know, not only, okay, are we, did we spend?
I thought it was ninety thousand.
Well, no.
We've, we've put in, okay, you have to do your math. We've put in a hundred sixty-nine already. We would owe two fifty-three that's already been spent. The total that is green lighted was, uh, put it over here, the eight hundred forty-three, I believe. So anything above and beyond the eight hundred and forty-three on the estimate, so.
And keep in mind too, is that, as we, that we do delay.
And it's gonna be different from that estimate anyways, I'll tell you right now, it's gonna be over a million dollars because that estimate has not been updated.
And construction costs are going down, so, so as you delay this out, if it gets laid out, it's only gonna cost more money.
Well, you know, in, in, in my, I, I guess the comment I wanna make, your, your comment's great, is, are, this has been part of the city's plan since two thousand one.
Yes.
Is that right? Two thousand one, that this is something that's there. There's been multiple opportunities to comment on it, to make changes. And, and I understand how it works, 'cause I, we're all the same way, and until something really happens, we, we don't get in, involved with it. So, a- as, as far as pushing that two hundred fifty thousand to the side and, and calling it a waste of money or whatever you wanna call, are we also willing to kick the can down the road? And now taxpayers can absorb all of it when it does have to go in, because it is part of the plan, it's part of the growth of the city, it will happen at some point.
Well, and to touch on that point, it, will it happen? Because it was sold in two thousand one as a plan that was worthwhile, because the city had an annexation intention to the east. Well, if you look at your current comprehensive plan, you've earmarked all your areas of priority for annexation and you don't have that area marked. It's not a priority, it, it's not reasonable to annex that direction, because you go across Plum Creek or Flood Plain. It's, it's not really, um, and, and we're, we're debating.
Exactly, the.
And that's really not the issue, so.
I just wanted to comment, what I know will be my symbolic vote again, is that I'm in a quandary. I was in the two to six years ago, I was one of the two. Uh, that's why I coined this road, the road to nowhere. Even before I knew how opposed they were to it, I thought it was a dumb idea, 'cause it doesn't go anywhere. There's no revenue generated off of that from utilities or taxes. So I'm still voting against it, but I just wanted to clarify, Chris, I'm not in fit, I'm in a quandary, 'cause I'm not in favor of throwing away two hundred fifty thousand dollars either. But I still think it's a bad idea, and so I'll stick with my vote, 'cause my mind has.
From my perspective. I was gonna say, from my perspective, one of the things I've struggled with since meeting with you guys the first time is getting them the information. And I realize it's not all the city's obligation or responsibility, a lot of it is the state. But there's been a lot of frustration on behalf of the homeowners. Um, it's hard for me to say I wanna go to eminent domain when I don't feel like they've been, had that time to properly negotiate, so, um, that's where I'm at right now.
Cheryl.
Yes.
In the conversation we've had tonight, are you comfortable with going for, with going forward? Knowing that you'll get a survey, you'll have someone walk or the property with you, you can negotiate up until December, you have this time period, you'll have your requests fulfilled? Is, is that sufficient?
Well, it's not up to me, I'm just the person in the home ownership association, so that's everybody that is involved with this, so.
I mean, that, that's my confusion is, after the meeting that we had a couple of weeks ago is, I came away with the impression that the intent was to oppose this period.
The intent was to oppose it because we never got information from the state or really any details as to where this was going to be going.
Okay, so now if we get those details.
Right, if we get those details, then we can have a conversation about what that means, yes.
So we can have a conversation about, sorry, my bad.
Yeah, 'cause I mean, if it's gonna be eminent domain, then that's, that's forcing somebody's hand, and that's.
Okay, so what you would want is a chance, is a chance to negotiate on, on cost, on, on details, on things like that?
Yes, yeah, right.
So.
One second, Alyssa, one second, I have John, I'll come to you. Yeah, since we had the opportunity, great, and you guys are gonna have the opportunity till December, till the hearing, I'll introduce the A resolution.
Okay, um. All right.
You're very satisfied that you can have that opportunity.
I'll display, yeah, we just need to have that information, right?
So this is the meeting, the time, so we can get things done for you.
Right, understood that this is new information, I don't know when this J E O thing was done, I wasn't at that meeting, wasn't privy to it, when you're supposed to be getting information like that.
Can we get them that information as well?
We've had meetings multiple times.
Right.
Even this whole area was full of everybody, opposition in for.
In what, which meeting?
We've had in past years.
Yeah, past years, I'm just talking about the last hall with J E O, I didn't.
Yeah, I don't, I don't remember when that was, when Julie was here, you weren't, Jake wasn't on board.
I wasn't here, Alyssa, were you here?
So to kinda rein, rein this in here, we do have a.
It was after two thousand fourteen, 'cause I was here.
In my brain.
Because remember, we were told that anything that would change or come up associated with this property, we would be informed. For ten years, we've asked that. So that wasn't, that was, this still hasn't happened up until this point, which.
We do have a.
We appreciate that.
A week, the council member has introduced the resolution, so just wanna clarify, this is on item twenty-three A, consideration of a resolution approving the preliminary plats, specifications and estimates, the P S and E for the Carol K Boulevard project. The resolution has been introduced and is designated as resolution number twenty nineteen dash thirty. Would anyone like to move that this resolution be passed and adopted?
So move.
Second. You have a motion in a second, please register your votes. Please display the votes.
Putting in favor, welcome back, Miller, Singleton, Schmidt, Hendricks.
And the little touch here, she needs a second, she needs to adopt, she needs to. All right, thank you. Item twenty-three B, this is an ordinance, this is consideration of an ordinance dedicating a public street to perpetual public use. Said street located in Wilderness Park First Edition to be named Carol K Boulevard. Would someone like to introduce the ordinance?
I'll introduce it.
An ordinance to approve the plaque entitled Carol K Boulevard Dedication Plaque. City of Seward, Seward, Nebraska, Seward County, Nebraska, has here an acter set forth located in part of Wilderness Park First Edition in the south half of the southeast quarter, section sixteen, township eleven, range three east of the sixth, of the six P M, to provide for publication of this ordinance in pamphlet form, to provide for an effective date hereof in ordering the publication of the ordinance in pamphlet form. The ordinance has been read by title and is designated as ordinance number twenty nineteen dash twenty-eight. And the title is hereby approved, any motion to dispense with the statutory rule?
So move.
Second, have a motion in a second. Is there any further discussion? Sign none, please register your votes. Please display the votes.
Putting in favor, welcome back, Miller, Singleton, Schmidt, Hendricks, opposed, Campford, Holman, motion carry.
And that is the last ordinance for this evening, so I need one final motion to make ordinance part of the final record.
So move.
Second. You have a motion in a second, please register your votes, please display the votes. Josh, you're reading through that stuff fast, we dispensed with statutory rule, did we actually vote on the ordinance?
Did I?
I don't think so.
I don't think so.
How far do we go?
I usually write down the ordinance numbers and I don't have.
Okay.
Twenty-seven, twenty-seven.
Let me back up a second.
Twenty-seven is a code.
Okay, so we're on twenty-three, item B, that's the ordinance, we said we disposed of the statutory rule. So this is ordinance number twenty nineteen dash twenty-eight, would anyone like to move that this ordinance be passed and adopted as read?
So move.
Thank you. You have a motion in a second?
Second.
Motion in a second, is there any further discussion? Again, this question is your ordinance number twenty nineteen dash twenty-eight, be finally passed and adopted, please register your votes, please display the votes.
Putting in favor, welcome back, Miller, Singleton, Schmidt, Hendricks, opposed, Campford, Holman, motion carry.
Good job. Uh, we're gonna introduce the next one again, this was the final mo, the final motion to make all the ordinance part of the permanent record. Any?
What's, what's that?
We just, that's what the.
Yes.
Okay, item twenty-three C, this is consideration of a resolution. Wait, hang on a second, go back.
What's that? You, you were doing the votes.
Yeah.
To approve all the final.
Yeah, to make all the ordinance as part of the permanent record, we have a motion?
So we're withdrawing the prior motion that did all the final?
Yes, 'cause we did, we did the wrong order, so we need to go back and do it again. So on the, on, make them all part of the permanent record, we need a motion. One in a second, please register your votes, please display the votes. All right, thank you for your patience. Item twenty-three C, this is consideration of a resolution of dedication of use of the walking path landscaping butterfly garden with parking. Any who introduce the resolution?
Oh, there it is.
The resolution has been introduced and is designated as resolution number twenty nineteen dash thirty-one, would anyone like to move that this resolution be passed and adopted?
So move.
You have a motion, is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion in a second, please register your votes, please display the votes. All right, item twenty-three D, this is consideration of resolution of dedication of use of the sidewalk connection to the trail system. Would someone can introduce that resolution?
I'll introduce it.
The resolution has been introduced and is designated as resolution number twenty nineteen dash thirty-two, would anyone like to move that this resolution be passed and adopted?
So move.
We have a motion, is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion in a second, please register your votes. Please display the votes. Next item is item twenty-four, this is the consideration of a resolution authorizing the city attorney to initiate eminent domain proceedings for acquisition, appeasements for Carol K Boulevard Beta Hill Crest project. Did you wanna add anything, Kelly? Does the council have any other questions or comments, yes, Ellen?
If we didn't do this tonight, we still have time to take it up, even if it's a month from now. So I, I think, you know, I'm, I'm gonna vote against this, because this affects the homeowners. They wanted a chance to get more information and to do due diligence, good negotiations, that's what they said their goal is, so, um, I don't know.
But I'll tell you, it's not gonna affect their ability to continue negotiations at all. But, and I think it's going to satisfy the Department of Transportation in getting that hearing date set, so.
So if we don't do this, you're saying this will not satisfy the state? But we would still have the opportunity to stop this at any time.
Up until the hearing.
Up until the hearing.
Yeah.
So as long as we can, we can go ahead and prove it and if we're not happy, we can strike it at any time, up until the hearing.
Give me that direction, correct.
Okay.
I'll introduce the resolution.
Okay.
Resolution has been introduced and is designated as resolution number twenty nineteen dash thirty-three, would anyone like to move that this resolution be passed and adopted?
So move.
Have a motion, is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion in a second, please register your votes, please display the votes.
Putting in favor, welcome back, Miller, Singleton, Schmidt, Hendricks, opposed, Campford, Holman, motion carry.
All right. Thank you for your patience, I know that was kind of a grind. It was for me. Um, item twenty-five, this is the city administrator's report.
I won't belabor it. Do you have any questions on the city administrator's report? I can answer.
Any questions for a graduate report? Sign none, you have a motion to accept?
So move.
Do you have a motion in a second? We have a motion in a second, is there any further discussion? Sign none, please register your votes, please display the votes. Any future requests for council agenda items or administrative action?
We have a.
Yes.
We have a.
What's that?
This is our gentleman who made the request before. Just say your name and then I can fill him in on the request.
Matthew Scott.
Matthew lives over, uh, in the, um.
Mobile Home Park, Twin Oaks.
Twin Oaks Park, and he had made their request in regards to looking at the yield signs of Progressive Road as you come out to the east of the Mobile Home Park, that there's a lot of people just running those things, correct?
It's, it's more than just that one, honestly, we've had issues with the one next to Sac Lumber and the intersection down by Casey's. Um, I know Casey's a little more difficult, there's a lot of parking spot, parking lots that people exit from there, but, um, we've had multiple reports, um, I, I myself with my kids in my vehicle have almost been T-boned at that intersection coming into the Mobile Home Park off of, I consider it North Sixth Street, I know it's not called that, once you get down to that intersection.
Highway fifteen.
Um, highway fifteen, um, people, and, and then coming out of the park as well, code five oh four has their parking right there, so as we're coming out of the park, people coming from that, from Casey's direction, the north, the north direction, don't slow down, they don't even seem to care that there's a yield sign there. So all we're asking is that maybe stop signs be put out there, so that it forces people to slow down and stop. I know people will still, you know, do rolling stops, that happens, but at least it makes it more of a mandatory thing for them to stop and watch for other traffic.
What we'll do is we'll take Matthew's request to the street superintendent, city engineer, myself and police chief, or the acting, or assistant chief right now, since, uh, Alan's out. And we'll take a review of that and then we can make a recommendation, obviously, to take a resolution by the city council to make any adjustments to that signage. We may also discuss enforcement, so that's what we can do for him for now. So we'll, we'll look at that for a future date for something formal.
All right, um, I was not informed if it would be on the agenda or anything today, um, so I, I showed up just to make sure. Will I be informed when you guys make a decision on this?
Yep.
I did send you an email based on the, what you provided me, so Alyssa went to your junk box, I don't know.
That would be my mistake, that probably went to my spam box.
I just, I saw him here and I felt so bad, 'cause I knew why he was sitting there, but I'm like, I, I don't know what else he did, he sat there, he's such a long one, I was like, at least give him a shot, let him have two seconds. So we'll take a review of it, then it may come back, it's in a future agenda item. Thank you for sticking around tonight, apologize.
If there's questions, any other requests? Yeah. Go ahead, what's?
That's all right.
Uh, my name's Trevor Pierce, sixteen eighty-eight Carol K Boulevard. Um, I have an ancillary request around the Carol K Road project. Right now, Carol K deadheads, you know, a couple blocks south of home. We live right off where East Ridge feeds into Carol K Boulevard, and first thing in the morning when, uh, school delivery is going on, that intersection is home to a lot of close calls. People off East Ridge roll it, um, there's no particular right of way established, um, Carol K is moving fast up the hill. East Ridge is trying to merge to go north. If that project goes through, I feel like a bad situation's gonna be exacerbated, especially if the existing plan that called for two streetlights on Carol K Boulevard has not been amended. I don't think people are gonna go that way, they're just gonna keep coming around East Ridge. And we're still gonna have problems with kids speeding, or, I'm sorry, with people speeding up and down Carol K and feeding onto it from East Ridge. And there's a lot of families with a lot of small elementary age children, myself, my neighbors, my neighbor's neighbors, and, so.
So the, the intersection of East Ridge and Carol K?
Yes.
I think we can make it known of that, it's like Jake's writing it down, so we can take that into consideration as we move forward.
We'll do the same review that, that we'll do for Progressive Avenue one as well.
Thank you.
Yeah, you bet, thanks for sticking it out. Jonathan?
Yes.
Upcoming event.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Uh, this upcoming Saturday, ninth flights, we appreciate the partnership with the Seward Municipal Airport. Would love to see you and others there. On Friday, September twenty-seventh, we are celebrating Young Nebraskans Week in partnership with Connecting Young Nebraskan, that's our statewide young professionals, uh, group, that's a gentle winery, so we'll have representatives from across the state coming for that networking event.
What's the age cutoff for that?
So twenty-one to forty is our.
Damn.
That's our, that's our target, well, that's our target market. We're an inclusive bunch, so you're welcome to join us.
Forty at heart.
Forty at heart is just fine, yes. And then on Monday, the thirtieth, we're hosting the Nebraska Chamber of Commerce Ball Forum, uh, with our own Senator Coulterman. And, uh, all of them will be updating our, our members and the public about legislative items of interest through the chamber and our senator, and then also, uh, presenting about Blueprint Nebraska, that was recently completed statewide, a strategic planning efforts. And so I would encourage you, um, that's gonna be a morning meeting, I'm starting at seven, seven-thirty at the civic center. So, uh, we'll be sending out some materials to the buzz tomorrow and also mass email, so thank you.
Thank you, Jonathan. Uh, next we have item number twenty-six, this is a strategy session with city attorneys to provide negotiation guidance concerning real estate interests at commercial rail campus development area, Kelly, or Chris?
Uh, I moved up to city council, going to closed session with the mayor, city administrator, city engineer Jake Basha, Jonathan Jank, and city attorney for the protection of the public interest and to discuss the commercial rail campus development area real estate interest and to provide the city attorney with negotiating guidance for a period not to exceed thirty minutes.
Jonathan Jank and city attorney for the protection of the public interest and to discuss the commercial rail campus development area real estate interest and to provide the city attorney with negotiating guidance for a period not to exceed thirty minutes.
We have a motion, is there a second?
Sorry.
A motion in a second, please register your votes, please display the votes. The council has voted to go into closed session for the protection of the public interest and to discuss the commercial rail campus development area real estate interest and to provide the city attorney with negotiating guidance. We're in closed session.